Okay, I am calling to order the regular bi-monthly meeting of the Marin Water Board of Directors for December 14th, 2021. The first item of business is to call the roll.
Director Gibson.
Here.
Director, I'm sorry, Vice President Russell.
Here.
And President Kohler.
I'm here. I do need a motion now to adopt the agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Do we have any public comment on the agenda, Terry?
Not on the agenda.
Okay, then I'm looking for a roll call vote on adoption of the agenda.
Director Bragman.
Hi.
Director Gibson.
Hi.
Vice President Russell.
Hi.
And President Kohler.
Hi. We're not going to have public comment, but only on the items on the closed session. If there's people who want to make comments on the regular agenda, we'll turn back to that at seven o'clock. So with that caveat, Terry, do we have any public comment, public comments on the closed closed session items?
There are none.
Great. We're now convening to close session.
Okay.
Okay, we are reconvening the regular bi-monthly meeting of the Marin Water Board of Directors for December 14th, 2021. We have finished our closed session with no reportable items. That brings us to public comment for any items that are not on the agenda. Terry, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mr. Rick Adler. Mr. Adler.
Yes, thank you. I see that you are filling a couple of positions this evening, and I want to suggest a new position. And that is researcher for new sources of water. The president's staff is overloaded with just maintaining the current systems. But we could very usefully, and it would be to our advantage to create a new position researcher for new water. And that could include things like fog or seeding the low clouds and fog that sits over the reservoirs with the sprayers that they use on the ski slopes to create snow. And T cell, but through boiling the bay water until it evaporates and condenses into very pure water, leaving only salt, which you can sell. People will pay money to come take it away. You don't have to put it back into the bay, which is one of the big problems with the reverse osmosis T cells. You have to put half the water back twice as salty, which will run into all kinds of problems, environmentalists and the regulators. And any other kinds of sources of water and also included in the research would be new ways to conserve and to manage the water, like eventually we'll probably need automatic. You know, need to replace the meters with the meters like to have with the PG&E. So that you can see what your use is all the time and the and the Marin Water can see when there's leaks and when there's anyway, and so research into ways to save water, conserve water, manage water, and especially look for new water. So that's my suggestion for tonight, and thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. We have two more speakers, Mimi Willard, then Ed, Ms. Willard.
Yes, good evening. Um, so I would just like to mention that, and perhaps prompt some comment about the expanding array of East Bay Municipal Utility District demands and conditions for wheeling water via the Richmond Pipeline. Clearly, we do need water security and dependability of having a water supply. But I guess the question is, is there a limit on the price or the amount of restrictions that you'll accept in order to achieve that? Today's East Bay Mud Board Meeting, at that meeting, staff gave to the board a set of wheeling principles for negotiations with MMWD. And they include the initially expected ones, like MMWD bears the costs, et cetera. But there's an expanding array of other conditions, most notably that the entertie could only be used when there is a declared drought emergency and East Bay mud's wheeling principles are met. And there's a long list of those principles, and they include some things like that reflect the tensions that arose around Richmond, so that essentially Richmond has a veto on whether there will be use of a pipe, whether there will be a pipeline. There are some other aspects of this, like mitigation of community impact and a suggestion that MMWD should contribute to East Bay mud's low income water, water subsidy programs. And I'm also concerned about a second aspect of this, which is that if constructed, East Bay mud is suggesting if these principles are adopted, that the operation of the emergency entertie could only use be used when Marin Water has declared a drought emergency and East Bay mud principles for wheeling are met. I'm sorry, that that East Bay that East Bay mud, if East Bay mud is asking for a customer demand reductions, it can only be done in the in the circumstance of supporting Marin Waters meeting public health and safety needs. And so I think that potentially that gets us to a situation where the the usage could really be restricted in such a way that the use that the cost of the water is very high, the circumstances under which it could be used are very low. And I wonder what would happen if, for example, we wanted to fill our reservoirs adequately during a time of of excess water that we might not be able to actually have necessary water for fire and earthquake. So I'm hoping to hear a robust discussion of the board around these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willard. Mr. Ed Jameson, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, thanks. I have some comments about the board's last meeting. The proposed policy to limit the $100 million pipeline to use only in a declared emergency for indoor water use only and limited to perhaps only half of its capacity would hugely damage the value of this large investment forever. And it is absolutely unacceptable. This critical policy is not about grass and mediums. That's a red herring Ms. Kohler keeps interjecting into these conversations. Many of us have long since gotten rid of our grass. The issue is all of our other landscaping, like modest gardens with roses, azaleas, and a few small trees that perhaps most of us water with water efficient drip systems. All of these plants would be killed. That could well accomplish Ms. Kohler's self-declared mandate to cut per capita use by over 50% to 60 GPD, but it is absolutely unacceptable. And last meeting's discussion was completely misguided in claiming that future MMWD boards can change this policy. It has been incorporated into East Bay mud's draft policies for their agreement with us as approved by East Bay mud's board earlier today, which would restrict use of our $100 million pipeline forever, unchangeable by future MMWD boards without exceeding to further potentially extortionate demands by East Bay mud, even beyond the owner's demands and their present draft terms. And this pipeline is our only link to our likely significant and strategically critical future storage in the Los Ricas Reservoir. The second principle slides restrictions on acceptable sources of water is too vague and perhaps even meaningless to be a practical use and could make it hard for our contra Costa partner to effectively help us source water. It risks contra Costa's deciding that we folks in Marin are just too difficult to deal with and should go find our own sources of water. Director Bragman, to your credit, you said you thought it wasn't realistic to spend $100 million on a pipeline that will only be used occasionally and restrict its use to only health and safety. Director Gibson, to your credit, you repeatedly called out these ill-advised policies for the foolishness that they are. And Director Russell, to your credit, you pointed out that water for things like rice farming could more reasonably be used here in a drought. The critical first policy limiting pipeline used to only health and safety may have received only two votes for approval, but without a vote, Ms. Kohler is ultimately determining these policies with her long and final voice being the one left for district staff to take as direction. This is a completely unacceptable way for the board to function. The first and third of the points in the draft policies for this $100 million investment are critically important and should individually receive a quick 20-second roll call vote by the directors, and this needs to be done. And any director who votes for a policy as damaging as the first one should have a scarlet letter embossed on his life's resume. Thank you.
Thank you. Two more callers jumped on, 1402, then Paul Duder. 1402.
James Holmes, Larkspur. I would like to concur with the two previous speakers' concern expressed with regard to both the escalating demands of the East Bay Water Districts and the proposed concept of limiting the use of water from the pipeline to dire emergencies. These are are very disturbing dark clouds, which I hope will will be dispelled because they certainly collectively present serious problems to the viability of this project. And they also exemplify the need to consider another measure, and I don't know whether it's appropriate to mention it now or whether it should be mentioned in conjunction with the water report, but it is, in brief, the the need to pursue amendments to the 1995 order that requires additional water supply to be used to support endangered fish in Loganitis Creek. This order needs amendment to this order needs, which is quite unrealistic at this stage, needs to be desperately pursued by both the district and our elected representatives, so that we can pursue the most obvious and easy and traditional approach to getting additional supply, which is building more reservoirs or expanding the existing ones. Thank you.
Thank you. And last speaker, Paul Duder.
Hi, I've been noticing that the spillway at Phoenix Lake is spilling. It's been spilling for over a month now. Is there a way that we can better utilize that water that we've already captured than to lose it? That's all, just a question.
Thank you. Those are all of our public comments.
Thanks, Terry. Okay, that brings us to directors and managers announcements. Anybody? Larry, Larry, Ben?
Are we gonna have any staff response? I mean, there are some answers to the Phoenix Lake and I know.
There are, but you know, Larry, we're not allowed to do that at this moment. I think it has to wait to an agendized item, don't you think?
I think we can give information like about the temporary use permit amendment that we've already submitted to the state water board to.
Well, let me let me defer that to Molly, because I generally, we don't respond to public comment on items that are not on the agenda. We only respond to items that are agendized. So it's not that I don't want to do, I'm with you about providing those responses, but these were these were comments that came up at this item. So I don't know if you want to wait, Molly, until we get to the agendized item that are most relevant. How do you want to handle that?
Right, I would say really quick, short responses. However, these are not agendized items, and I think there is an opportunity later on the agenda under the drought report. So we can loop back and get that information to folks.
That's fine. Just just to assure people, there is some information responsive to those questions.
Absolutely. Yeah. Okay. So did we have any directors announcements? And Ben, did you have any announcements?
I do. None announcement, per se. I did want to provide a brief, high-level, high-level update on the status of our drought water supply projects. Briefly, and first, just noting, of course, these recent rains are very welcome, which is probably a big understatement, but we do know it's going to take time to recover from our historically low reservoir levels. And that future droughts will happen and likely increase in frequency due to climate change. So as you know, to address the current situation and to build greater water supply resiliency over the long term, the district continues to explore multiple options for increasing our community's water supply. And this includes working with all the stakeholders on the emergency entertie project. And the project includes the eight-mile pipeline across the Richmond-San Rafael Bridge. This isn't the case of any project this big and complex. There's a number of factors that must be worked through to ensure viability of the project, and staff remains very focused and just tremendous amount of work is going on in those areas. In parallel, we also continue to work on a second option for increasing our water supply, specifically as we've previously discussed. We're working with Sonoma Water on an innovative approach to accessing extra available water supply from the Russian River during the winter months. Over the past six weeks, as we're kind of piloting this concept, we've secured more water under this approach than we've done in the past. And in this time period, we're able to do this due to the work that Sonoma Water did, getting an exemption to their temporary urgency change petition that allowed this extra water to come in outside of the curtailments that were in place. And that this additional water is in excess of the minimum stream flows of the Russian River, in fact, often orders of magnitude in excess that would otherwise go out to the ocean. Also wanted to note, as we've talked about, the rehabilitation of the Castagna Pump Station sunderway is a key piece to helping secure this winter water supply, and that work is progressing well, and we're going to provide an update this Friday at the Ops Committee. Noting, actually, Crystal just texted me that we had quite an operation we'll share in more detail today. It was a hot tap, which is basically connecting to the North Marin Line while it was operating, so could quite, and it was successful, thankfully. So as we continue exploration of both these projects, the emergency entertie and the Sonoma Water option. I do want to note, of course, we're closely monitoring precipitation forecasts and how our stores looks and what's going on in the climate, and that dictates potentially the level of urgency. Does it decrease and give us a bit more time or not? And so we are keeping a close eye on that. So over the next month or two, staffs, of course, continues to develop these projects for decision-making on the best direction to go for the district. And noting in the interim, at least for now, although next week's really looking promising, and we'll see where we go. The need for community conservation measures does remain a priority, and we really do appreciate all the work the our customers are doing in that regard. So that is the end of my comments.
It's great. Thanks very much, Ben, and the rain is obviously good news for for all of us. This brings us to the consent calendar, and I'd like to propose that we take the resolution of commendation for Mike Ban off the consent calendar and put that on the regular calendar, since our former director of engineering is here, and we want the opportunity to celebrate him, you know, appropriately. So if with the with the consent of my fellow board members to that, I'm looking for an approval of the of the consent calendar.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar with removing item number three.
Second.
Second.
Do we have any public comment on this item, Terry? On the, yeah, on the consent calendar approval.
There are none. Director Bragman.
Hi.
Director Gibson.
Hi.
Director Schmidt.
Hi.
Vice President Russell.
Hi.
And President Kohler.
Hi. That brings us to item three, resolution for commendation to Mike Bonn, and is this is this you, Ben? Or are there others here to to read the commendation?
I'll go ahead and read this. Michael. Whereas the Marin Municipal Water District wishes Marin Water to express our sincere appreciation to Mike Bonn for serving as our director of engineering for over 11 years. Whereas after gaining valuable engineering experience as a civil engineer in the private sector, working on a number of engineering design projects such as flocculation basins, pump stations, remediation of hydrocarbon, construction management on large projects, Mike joined, then joined the public sector, came over to the good side here, and continues to establish himself as a highly skilled engineering professional through work with the city of Petaluma as engineering manager, director of water resources and conservation, where he directed the planning and organizing of water resources. Mike continued supporting the public good through engineering projects when he joined us Marin Water as director of engineering in 2010. And whereas Mike has been the driving and steady force behind the district's CIP Capital Improvement Program over the past decade, continually improving and upgrading the district facilities. And whereas during his tenure at Marin Water, Mike championed the comprehensive water treatment master plan that used a risk-based asset management approach approach, introducing these concepts to the district. And whereas as director of engineering, Mike has overseen more than 75 miles of system pipeline infrastructure replaced through our pipeline replacement program, and whereas Mike has provided valuable insight and guidance on critical engineering projects such as the emergency replacement of transmission pipe inside Portius Tunnel, originally installed 1926 as part of the district's concrete road pipeline network. Whereas Mike led the implementation of the Fire Flow Improvement Program in 2012, extending necessary investments in the Fire Flow Program for an additional 15 years to complete the capital projects identified to improve firefighting capability in Marin County through the replacement of fire flow deficient pipelines and seismic enhancements. Just about 12 more here. Mike, you were really busy. A lot of, a lot of great work. Whereas Mike was responsible for large and complex projects such as a filter seismic upgrade project and Ross Reservoir slide repair. Mike never showed any signs of stress and always had time to support his staff. And Mike led highly skilled engineering teams and large-scale projects that contributed to the consistent, efficient flow of safe, high-quality drinking water to Marin Water customers under all circumstances. Mike belongs to the rare breed of engineers who are equally adept at both utility engineering and utility finance, including the arcane world of Prop 218, and can quickly whip up a spreadsheet to both press this point and disprove the finance division's denial of money for his pet project. We're gonna miss that, Mike. Mike elected to defer boxing up his personal belongings. This is so significant. And instead worked on the upgrade to the Castagna Pump Station Emergency Entertie Project in literally until the very last minute, he was here. He was just cranking and working. Mike is a voracious reader and loves talking about the latest books he has read and suggests books to anyone to read, to anyone interested in reading, is known to lace his engineering, his engaging engineering discourse with thoughts from his latest reads. Mike always brought a positive can-do approach to even the most complex problems and challenges. Mike is truly a multifaceted personality who excels in a variety of activities, including serious road biking and is known to bring a bike to work, so he can steal an evening ride to Alpine Lake and back. And that, too, without letting a drop of sweat deform on his forehead. Okay, maybe a stretch. Whereas Mike, on the tennis court, Mike plays aggressively and tries to destroy his opponent. While at work, he's always a gentleman and collaborative with the staff and colleagues. Mike's love of cookies is surpassed only by his desire to produce the most perfect staff reports and presentations to ensure the board always had the right information with which to make a decision. Mike spent a lot of time on that, and it's really appreciated, Mike. Mike's a delight to talk to and a team player in every sense of the word, and is known to accept compromises readily for the good of the whole. Mike was always apt to portray a calm demeanor with a mastery over facial expression that he lovingly credited to having raised three beautiful daughters at home. Whereas the Board of Directors of MMWD sincerely expresses his appreciation to Mike for extraordinary service to the district and wishes him the best as he enters the next phase of his life, which includes baking the most delicious chocolate chip cookies sprinkled with molten salt and sharing it with his family and dusting off his tennis racket to really get serious about that. So for me and others may have comments, I just wanted to appreciate the time we worked together, Mike. You were just a real committed, dedicated employee that was a pleasure working with.
Thank you so much. The molten salt was a secret. I don't know who I told that to. Maybe Paul. Thank you so much, Ben. That that was a delight to hear. I didn't read it beforehand, but wow, somebody put a lot of time into that, so.
Well, it was a lot of hands in it, and it was one of these, sometimes it's like, oh, we got to write these up. This was different. This was really everyone wanting to have their hands in this. And I think it reflects, you know, how everyone thinks about you, Mike.
Wow, thank you so much. You know, one of, I mean, I was thinking about today, and the thing that really struck me most about the district is really just the quality of the people, and I got that sense when I started. I got to work alongside some great people, Dana and Bob Cook and Bob Castle, and and Paul was right there with me from the beginning. Thank you, Paul, for not retiring and sticking around. But I got to learn from them, but eventually, you know, those legends, they instilled such a sense of pride in me. But they retired and a new crop of staff came along, and it's been really gratifying for me to see, you know, Lucy, I see there, Lucy, how she's just grown and taken on such huge challenges here at the district, and Alex, I mean, Alex is just amazing, and Alicia, such good people. I mean, I really enjoyed that part of the the district. And then the team that Ben has assembled, you know, the leadership team here, what a delight to work with all of you. Molly was such a huge, you know, factor here at the district, and Chuck and Paul, as you rose up with the organization, and Carrie and Terry, I mean, and Crystal and Vicki, I really treasured those Wednesday meetings. Sometimes they would go on for a long time, but they were always interesting. And, you know, I want to really single out Ben for all that you did for me and for the department and your steady leadership. You know, when you started, it was, you know, you had no honeymoon. It was just, it took off, and you've just been a steady leader throughout this whole thing, and especially what's happening with the drought. And I think about that email you wrote us back in 2020, early 2020, about what we were going to do to face the drought and all of those things we've been implementing. So just huge, I mean, it's a tough job, and I really enjoyed working alongside you, Ben. And then the board, I mean, for Cynthia and Larry and Jack, we've been together from the very beginning, and then Monty and Larry Bragman. It's been a pleasure working with you. I'm still acoustic, Larry. I ride my bike up to Middle Peak, and it fills me with such huge pride every time I do that. I want to shout at people up there, hey, I, this is my district, you know? So it's just wonderful. So thank you all so much. I miss you guys, and I have such good memories of working for the district. It's a real special place. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Larry.
No, just agreeing, you know, thank you for everything you did for the district and for us, Mike. You kept us out of a lot of trouble.
Yeah.
Got us into trouble once in a while, but mostly you kept us out of trouble.
Yeah.
And, yeah, you did an excellent job.
Yeah.
Yeah, speaking for me, I just wanted to say that it was just a pleasure. You know, I've worked with a lot of engineers, all intelligent and capable, but very few as funny and as willing to work with non-engineers. And and it was really an honor to work with you all that time and to learn from you.
Yeah, yeah. You you go on a list of people that are now going. You, you go on a list of people that are now going, Mike, who have been monumental contributors to the district. And there's been no decision in the last 12, 13 years that you haven't been just absolutely pivotal to, you know?
Yeah.
It's hard to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I was just gonna note, I think in line with Jack, as you were reading those names, Mike, I think the next person's gonna add your name to that list.
Yeah. Yeah.
If I can just say, I think it's really apropos that our general manager announced that we did the hot tap at Castagna today. Because I know how hard Mike worked on that project from the very beginning and through the time that, as, as Ben said, he should have been taking his early, you know, vacation pre-retirement and he stuck it out to the very end to contribute to the benefit of the district. Thank you.
I, I think it's important, Molly, too, to indicate this is not a one inch tap. This is a full type cap. This is a big dude. And it was, it was very challenging conceptually and implementing it.
Okay, so with that, I need a motion to approve this particular resolution of commendation for Mike Bond.
Move approval. Second.
We don't have any, do we have any public comment on this, Terry?
There are none.
Then I need a roll call vote.
Director Bragman.
Hi.
Director Gibson.
Hi.
Director Schmidt.
Hi.
Vice President Russell.
Hi.
And President Coler.
Hi. Thank you again, Mike, for everything.
Oh, thank you all. Have a good evening.
Yeah.
You too.
Remember, we.
Yeah.
See you on the trails.
See you on the trail. Bye bye.
Okay, I believe that brings us to item seven. Is that right, Terry? Am I reading the agenda correctly? Resolution, Resolution Authorizing the Award Contract 1951?
Um, I think we're actually on item 12, President.
Oh, all the rest of these items on the calendar?
Calendar.
Okay, fine. Then we're gonna move on to item 12. And this is a resolution adopting the final study neg deck for the Pine Mountain Tunnel Tanks Replacement. Um, am I now opening the public hearing or are we first having the presentation and then I'm opening it?
Thank President Coler. Typically, we would have the presentation and then we can open the public hearing where we're ready to receive public comment.
Okay, great. Then that is what we will do.
Okay, good evening, Directors. Crystal Yesman, Director of Engineering. Just to recap, yes, we are presenting the final initial study mitigated neg deck for the Pine Mountain Tunnel Tanks Replacement Project tonight and asking the board to approve the project on the condition that we comply with the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And with that, I'm gonna pass it over to Alex Anaya, Engineering Manager for Design.
Thank you, Crystal. And good evening, Directors. I'm Alex Anaya, the Engineering Manager of the Design Section. This evening, I will be presenting the final initial study mitigated negative declaration for the Pine Mountain Tunnel Tank Replacement Project and Approval. This evening, co-presenting with me will be Eric Zigus from Environmental Science and Associates. At the May 21st Operations Committee Meeting during the update to the Water System Master Plan, staff had identified the next steps involving the preliminary design of the preferred site for the Pine Mountain Tunnel Tanks Replacement Project. The preliminary design was necessary in order to complete the sequel analysis interview. And then at the July 6th Board Meeting, the Board awarded a professional services agreement with Woodard and Current to provide the engineering services for the preliminary design of the Pine Model Tunnel Tanks Replacement Project. The site at Concrete Pipe Road, also known as CP5, was identified as the best site during the Water System Master Plan Review amongst old and new sites that were evaluated. Staff later presented a project update at the September 17th Operations Committee Meeting. And at this meeting, staff informed the committee that staff would be filing the Notice of Intent and the Draft ISMD with the Marin County Clerk and the State Clearinghouse. District staff also discussed that after the public comment period, we would be coming back to the board for a final ISMD adoption, which we're doing today, hopefully. So district staff then distributed the, for agency and public comment, the draft ISMD for the project following the September 17th meeting. The NOI was provided to residents and occupants of nearby properties via mail and filing the, filing it at the Marin County Clerk's Office for public posting. The district also provided a web link on our website to the documents and also provided hard copies for public review at the district's main office here at Nellin and at the Sky Oaks Ranger Station. At the conclusion of the 30-day review period, the district had received a total of three comment letters. The final ISMD includes responses to those three common letters in Chapter 3. Revisions were made to the draft ISMD to clarify information initially presented in response to the comments received. The revisions made between the draft and final ISMD do not require recirculation of the draft ISMD since they do not raise any new issues or create additional impacts that are already addressed and mitigated for in the draft ISMD to a lesser than significant level. And in addition, the revisions made do not constitute any substantial revision as defined in the Sequel Guidelines Section 15073.5 and therefore do not require recirculation of the document. The mitigation monitoring and reporting program or MMRP for this project has been prepared in accordance with Sequel Guidelines. District will be using the MMRP to track compliance with the project mitigation measures and will incorporate all mitigation measures adopted for the project. The mitigation measures are identified on Table 6-1 of Chapter 6 of the final ISMD and what implemented will mitigate any potential significant environmental impacts to less than significant. Based on this information, staff is recommending the board approve a resolution adopting the final initial study mitigated negative declaration for the Pine Mountain Tunnel Tanks Replacement Project and approve the Pine Mountain Tunnel Tanks Replacement Project conditioned on compliance with the MMRP and direct staff to file the notice of determination with the Marin County Clerk and the State Clearinghouse.
Thank you. Um, let's start first. Am I now opening the public hearing? I never get this right.
President Coler, you can open the public hearing now. It's really fine now or when you take public comment, either way.
Okay, well, we're opening the public hearing and I want to start with board comment and then we'll go to public comment. Any board comment on the item?
I've got a couple of comments. I'm really heartened that you dealt with some of the comments that came in about the lighting. But I'm just wondering whether that, whether we have that kind of lighting on our other facilities. It just, I, I haven't been in the watershed enough at night to really know whether we have those type of lights on our other facilities and it, it, it seems a little, I don't know, unnecessary to me from a security point of view. And I'm just wondering if you could sort of fill me in on, on why the lights are even being installed up there.
Sure. Basically, the consideration was given mostly from a security and also a safety standpoint for folks said if something were to happen, they had to go out there in the middle of the night to climb up the stairs to have at least some lighting behind the tank to actually access the site. So that's kind of where we were kind of considering as far as a safety and security aspect for, for the inclusion of lights with the project.
Is it, is it motion detected light? Is it?
That, yes.
So see, to me, I mean, that raises some issues because you're gonna have wildlife that's gonna come trotting around, that's gonna activate the lights. And, you know, I, I definitely can see why we need, you know, lights that are switchable. But I'm a little concerned about having motion detected lights. And as far as security, you know, why not just use some kind of infrared camera to, to capture any intrusion into the facility?
Yeah, we could.
And if I could, I will certainly take that into consideration. They, the consultants did come up with a way to shroud the lights so that it didn't spread out in terms of lumens.
Yeah, no, yeah. No, I saw that, but you know, there's a lot of critters up there that are gonna set those lights off. So I could see that that could be disruptive if there are nesting owls or there are nesting animals and you know, as far as security, you know, I hate to say it, but I think cameras are, are a more effective means of at least capturing, you know, images that could be helpful to any security problems more than, than lighting. So.
Yeah, and we can certainly put it on a switch and give it a try. And if we're finding that there's vandalism on a recurring basis, lighting often is often a deterrent to folks just being in the limelight per se, but we can certainly put it on a switch and give it a try to start off with. And if there's no issues with vandalism or security, we can keep them off.
I would, it would be appreciated. It's gonna be fenced, won't it? The facility will be fenced in?
Yes.
Already? So, okay, well, if you guys could try that, that would be, I think, would be less disruptive. So I appreciate you hearing that. Thanks a lot.
Are the lights impactful on any residents at all? I,
no, no, they're far enough away that there's not gonna be any impact to anyone near the road.
Okay.
Okay, other board comments on this item? All right, Terry, let's go to public comment, if any, on this item.
Mr. Roger Roberts, please. Mr. Roberts.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Roger.
Uh, I have no problems with the project per se, but I'm concerned about the decommissioning of the tunnel itself, which has bats. And you want to make sure that children don't wind up going into the tunnel by mistake or even just for an adventure. And how the decommissioning of the tunnel itself will take place. I, I don't think that's actually part of the EIS or EIR that was promulgated because that was only dealing with the tank itself. Could somebody explain what you're gonna do in connection with the decommissioning?
Can we get that response?
Sure, yeah. So we haven't yet decided if the tunnel will be completely filled and decommissioned. There's actually options on the table for perhaps putting an HTP line in there to bring raw water to the lakes at some point in the future. So it's still under planning and in order to determine what's happening with the tunnel in the future, but we, it is sealed to the public. There's no way for children or the public to access the tunnel. We will ensure that it's safely blocked off.
What, what about the bats?
Well, I was not part of the inspection that happened 10 years ago. Alex, did you recall the bat sightings in that inspection?
I, no, I wasn't part of that inspection either. I don't recall there being.
I, I think there was, there was a proposal when it was decommissioned to turn it into a bat habitat. But right now, yeah, I don't think there's bats living there now. I think the, the connection with bats was if it was decommissioned to turn it into some sort of a habitat or refuge.
Yeah, that makes sense. It is sealed. Way for the animals to get in and out. So I doubt that there's bats there today.
I, I think that's where the bats come in.
Okay. There are no further comments.
Oh, I have a, I do have a question. Does, we know the state has been looking at this for a long time. Does this give us sign off as far as the state of California is concerned? Or do we still have issues out there with the state?
No, well, once we build the replacement and decommission Pine Mountain Tunnel, yeah, that's history.
Okay.
But this project does not entail decommissioning at the same time.
Yeah, well, there's a valve can turn on the outlet to the tunnel to take it out of service.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But that, that's not part of the CI, EIR, what the F I S M N D, as Alex was calling it. Anyway, there's, there's some good stuff in there. I mean, increasing the frequency that you're surveying the birds. I thought that was great, you know? So there's, there's some good mitigation measures in there that I really do appreciate. So.
I do want to point out that because of the mitigation, there's a project is gonna take at least five years to complete because our window for the construction, you know, to avoid impacts to bat, but not, I mean, to owls is so small. Our construction window is gonna be very short each year. So the project's gonna take a while.
Yeah. Well, I, I've always thought it's a good location and, you know, all things considered, you know, I'm really pleased we're moving forward with it, so.
Okay, Terry, any other public comments?
There are no further comments.
I want to bring it back to the board for a motion and a vote. President Coler, are you prepared to close the public hearing as well? Yes, I am. Thank you. Thank goodness you're here, Molly.
I'll second.
Terry, did you get that?
No, I didn't. I'm sorry. Who was the first to seconded?
I moved approval, Terry.
Thank you.
And did you get the second?
I second.
Okay, then we need a roll call vote.
Director Bragman.
Hi.
Director Gibson.
Hi.
Director Schmidt. Vice President Russell.
Hi.
President Coler.
Hi. That brings us to the regular calendar. Item 13, Adoption of an Ordinance Extending the COVID-19 Payment Plans.
Good evening, President Coler, members of the board. Yeah, we are asking the board tonight to adopt ordinance 456 to extend the effective date of the current COVID-19 payment plans. So last February, the board approved ordinance 447. And essentially that gave the general manager authority to extend payment plans for those who are 60 days in arrears on their, on their water bills. And under the code, we're normally allowed to give payment plans of 12 months. That allowed us to go up to five years on those plans. That expires on December 31st. So in the meantime, in October, we applied under the California Water and Wastewater Rears Payment Program for in excess of $2 million for customers that are in arrears, both residential and commercial. That money began being distributed by the state in October. We're expecting distributions through the end of January. So essentially what we're doing here is just asking the board to extend the deadline to next December, to December 2022, so that we don't have to put people on payment plans and then turn around and wipe out those payment plans and those are just with money that we receive under this program. So that is what we are asking of the board with this item.
Thank you, Chuck. Do we have any board comment on this item?
It's reported.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item, Terry?
There are none.
All right, I am looking for, this is an approval item, so I'm looking for a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Director Bragman.
Hi.
Director Gibson.
Hi.
Director Schmidt.
Hi.
Vice President Russell.
Hi.
And President Coler.
Hi. That brings us to the drought update and I'm just gonna ask staff as you're presenting, I mean, we can wait till the end, but I'm sure you caught some of the comments, some of the questions that were made in the earlier. You know, when, when people were, were asking questions that are not on the agenda, some of these, I think, fit in here. So you could work in answers to those questions or say them to the end, whatever makes the most sense for you. I just want to make sure we don't lose track of those.
Yeah, I'll, I'll hit one quickly that I don't believe really fits in the presentation and that's a question of our environmental releases for endangered species. Of course, we have a very special cohort steelhead run that were the stewards of. And you take that very responsibly. In this drought, for the first time in our history, we went through a regulatory process called a temporary urgency change petition that allowed us to reduce the releases based upon extensive studies that we did that demonstrated it would not cause, you know, significant measurable impacts to the fishery system. And having done that this year successfully, we now have a template and a process where we needed to do it in future dry years. We now know how to do it and we've done it before. So it, it's really what we've done. I, the way I look at it, we've created a new drought tool. So it's really what we've done, the way I look at it, we've created a new drought tool successfully that we will likely look at in future drought scenarios if we need to.
Okay, good evening, board directors. I'll start the presentation now, and I think there was another question that I'll hit in the, in the middle of the presentation. Share my screen. Good evening, I'm Lucy Kroy, the Water Quality Manager. And tonight, we have a drought update over the past month, giving some updates on some water supply conditions, as well as an update on our drought outreach, looking back over the past year. And then we also are going to take a step back and, and look ahead, so looking at the upcoming year. So starting off with water supply, likely kind of a apprehension on knowing what's happened over the past couple of days. So we saw just about nine inches of rain in the past storm. So kind of building off the, the large storms in October, we're now on the screen line. So just about 31 inches for this water year, which is over 200% of our average for this time of year. And it's, it's really, it's really a good sign going into December to see this, this much, this much rain early in the season after such two dry, two dry years. And looking ahead, it looks like we will be getting another inch or so tomorrow, at least when I had looked at this earlier today. And then looking ahead for the next, early next week, it looks like we'll probably get another two inches or so if this forecast holds. So it looks like we'll still get another couple of inches through the end of December. So then how that rain has impacted our reservoir storage, we've seen another climb, now surpassing where we were last year. So as of this morning, we're just above 52,000 acre feet, which is about 65% of our total capacity. The orange line shown here is where we were last year. So it's good to see that now we're in a better place than where we were last year. And then this line right here, kind of dash, that's our average. So looking at the historical average, we're still a little bit below that, but getting much closer to that historical average going into the end of December, especially with more rain coming. And then pulling in kind of another data source that we look at is the NOAA precipitation prediction. So they do a short-term prediction, looking at just eight to 14 days. And, you know, what they've shown here is kind of above-average rainfall for this time of year. And we're seeing a bit of that right now. And then a seasonal outlook, so over on the right-hand side, this is showing, you know, looking back, this was actually put out in mid-November. And it's updated once a month, but the seasonal outlook looks through February. And it's another way of just kind of, you know, how, how we can look at our water supply through February or so and understanding, you know, how that La Niña that we've talked about in previous presentations may impact rainfall coming up, or may not. We're seeing quite a bit of volatility compared to what we've seen over the last two years. So then, moving into water supply projections, this chart has now been updated, taking into account the early rainfall that we've seen, both in October and now December. So just about 50,000 acre feet. And then looking ahead, you know, if we were to get average rainfall and runoff, we would see ourselves spill going into March and April. And then on the lower end, if rainfall were to slow down and we were to see a drier spring, that would end up more at 25% of average, would end up closer to around 30,000 acre feet going into next December. So kind of just bracketing expectations and where we could end up. And then considering that, you know, the early rainfall that we've gotten and how that has improved our supply conditions earlier than expected, we're working on developing recommendations to, to consider rolling back water use limits and penalties. Should these supply conditions and storage conditions continue to improve further through the end of December? And so we are, we're proposing to bring back at the January 4th board meeting, recommendations for the board to consider about rolling back the water use restrictions, the water use limits and penalties that were brought forth in effective December 1st. So at this point, I'm going now to hand off to Carrie Pollard, our Water Use Efficiency Manager.
Thank you, Lucy. Good evening, board. You go to the next slide. So I wanted to take this opportunity, this, this outreach update, to reflect on the significance of each of the drought responses that we've taken over the last year, starting back in February with the initial voluntary call to action. As you look at the progression, it's, it's really clear that our focus was on irrigation. And it was recognized upfront that by focusing on irrigation would be, give us our greatest opportunity to, to achieve the significant savings, that water savings that we really needed in light of our water supply conditions. Next slide. Another way to look at this would be looking at our actual versus targeted water use. And we continue to track this week over week. And it's, it is quite impressive, but since May, we've seen a 25% reduction in demands. I think that the dip in October is, is amazing, right? That where you see everyone turned off the irrigation and we're seeing a bit of flatlining. Another thing that I find really interesting on this slide is that we can see our current demands in comparison to the baseline, the winter baseline, which we would generally think of, of winter baseline being only indoor use and not having much of an opportunity to see significant reductions. Yet, our customers are continuing to respond to our call to action and be, you know, significantly below that, that baseline water use. Side. So as part of this, this reflection of kind of where we've been over the last year, I wanted to start with our two distinct public, public awareness campaigns. We started back in the spring, focusing on bringing awareness of the drought. So drought is here, save water. And then in the, in the summer, midsummer, we can transition from an acknowledgement that our, that our community was aware there was a drought, but we wanted to have a call to action that really embraced the, the need to work together and unify to conserve. And, and then you can see our updated campaign there. Side. We had a number of community events. This slide really focuses in on the Torday drought. But what I really feel like we, we learned from these community events is the, the value of our trusted partners, our trusted messengers kind of program, right? And that recognizing that not all of our water users get their water information from their water district, right? They, they go other, they look other places to find information on what's happening within their community. And it's an opportunity for the district to really leverage those other trusted messengers, whether they be a local brewing company, or, you know, school districts or others, to really help share our message and convey that more broadly to the community. And I think this is just one example of, of how that really worked. And I think as we look back, this is a good lesson learned, and something that we can continue to, to utilize in the future. Side. So looking at community engagement, over the last year, we did 60 community presentations. We were thrilled that many of those presentations were actually participated, the board participated in as well. These included homeowner groups, chambers, rotaries, et cetera. You know, sometimes they were only six people on those Zoom calls, and sometimes, you know, there were 60. But what it really was, gave us an opportunity, staff an opportunity to have conversations in smaller groups and get questions answered and, and, and help the community understand that we're not just having a call for conservation. It was an opportunity for them to understand other water supply options we're considering and kind of what's currently happening within the district as part of our drought response. And so those were very valuable. We had two drought drive-up events where we distributed thousands of drought kits. So that's hardware that would have been installed in homes that we can continue to, you know, gain those savings from. With each significant board action, there was a mailing that went out to really help our customers understand, you know, each of, each of the new restrictions as they were rolled out. And finally, I think another, another big win is our social media, right? That we've seen a growth in, in followers and we have a over, a reach of over 1.1 million. And I think that's something else we can continue to, to grow and utilize in a meaningful way as we move forward. Side. And finally, looking at some drought success by the numbers. So we, we launched six new incentive programs for our customers to help them, you know, reduce their water use. We responded over 10,000 customer calls and emails. This is five times more calls than we would get on a, on an average year. We converted over 500,000 square feet of turf, which ultimately be the water use plant material. This is again, long-term water savings that we can benefit from, you know, from our customers. And then you can see some of the other savings and, and, you know, stats that were, that were developed for this presentation. I think it's important to note that not only did we just tell our customers that they needed to conserve through our, through our outreach, but we actually gave them the tools, we gave them the resources to help them achieve those goals and work with us. And, and we can see that from the response that, 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 that we had. So I don't want this update to convey like, oh, we're done by any means. It's really more of a recognizing, you know, with a bit of rain, it's an opportunity to stop, to come up for air and reflect, right? It's the end of the year, look at where we've been, what are our lessons learned? And, and really, where are we going? And the where are we going is a, is a great opportunity for me to hand the rest of the presentation off to our new community, Eric Communications and Public Affairs Manager, Adrian Mertens, to handle the rest of the presentation.
Thanks, Carrie. Good evening. And yes, I will close out this update with a few notes on what's ahead. And for public communications, you know, assuming that the weather patterns that Lucy went over in her update hold up, the level of urgency in the current drought crisis will diminish. And as that happens, our outreach and our communications plan will also need to shift to focus on the district's continued planning efforts surrounding the resilience of our water system. And there's really two collective parts to this. First is that education and reinforcement to the community and reinforcing to the community the importance of water conservation as a way of life. We want to make sure that all of our customers understand that even if we're able to emerge from the current drought emergency, we're likely going to face future dry years. And managing the man, demand on our system is important for our long-term sustainability. And so with that in mind, we'll be continuing to educate on the need for ongoing water efficient practices. Many that Carrie just went over. We'll continue to promote our water-saving programs and services, not just as an emergency effort, but again, as part of everyday life. Second, we'll be doing more to communicate to customers about the proposed operational and water supply projects that are in progress. You know, the, the things that Marin Water has already been exploring to increase our system resiliency. And this includes the Intertie and the Winter Water Efforts with Sonoma Water, which Director Horenstein mentioned in his update, excuse me, General Manager Horenstein. And we want to ensure that our customers feel informed about these projects, that where we are with our work on them and their purpose to ensure that we'll have a water system that we, that can adapt and respond to potential water shortages for years to come. And so there, there'll be a lot more to share on this communications work as the weather patterns come through and as the details of those outreach plans to begin to take shape. Next slide, please. So in summary, next steps for this team, we're going to continue to refine and enhance our drought outreach and conservation efforts. We're going to continue operational and water supply projects. And we will continue to monitor and report to the board our status as compared to established conservation goals. And with that, we will open questions and comments. Thank you.
Thanks very much, everybody, for really a great and very informative presentation. I want to start with board comments. This is not an action item. So then we'll have board comments and then go to the public. We're all really happy about the rain, so thanks for making that happen.
I'm happy, but I'm, I, I'm a little bit concerned about coming back next month with loosening of our conservation rules. The board has not declared the drought emergency over. It's not over. So I think we need to reconsider the timing of that until we're, you know, we have more information about our supply capacity, which is still, you know, sort of up in the air. So that's the one comment I have that I think is somewhat action-oriented.
If I could, President Kohler, I, I wanted to respond to that. And I, I think it may have come across as we're bringing back the rollback. And really what we meant is staff is thinking about it. Obviously, this weather is here. If it continues this weather pattern, we could be at a position that the board would want to. So what we're just saying, that staff is preparing for that scenario. And in that case, we would bring it in January. And even if next week's storms, you know, go away, we, we still want to have the discussion with the board, for example, on what parameters would we think about? And we weren't talking about, right, the board took a number of successive steps. So the ones we talked about and we were thinking about just the most recent, right? We would kind of, depending on the weather, unwind those if the weather is continuing in this pattern, kind of in the order, the reverse order that they were implemented. So we'll, we'll have a good discussion next month. And depending on the weather, we'll be prepared with a recommendation, if it really looks that way, to give the board the option to proceed that way. If not, it'll be more of an informational item and we'll talk about what things look like.
You know, I, I would just urge caution. I think, you know, our ordinance says, you know, we can, we can declare the drought emergency over. If, if we can predict we're going to have 40,000 acre feet next December. So we, we've got a long planning horizon. And I'm really concerned about sort of losing that momentum. I think of Carrie's numbers on, on grass conversion and all those other things are really pretty impressive. I mean, really. And, and not just, I mean, it's an indication of, you know, staff doing a great work, but also our residents really responding. And I just, I want folks to keep that, you know, we need to be very water-conscious going forward. So that's kind of my cautionary note.
There's, there's a distinction between giving up on those procedures that we were following and that, the model we encouraged versus the penalties. The, the penalties will be the first to go.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I can see that. But, you know, the other things we're encouraging, I think, really sort of.
It's a winning record.
Kind of, they need to stay. A lot, you know, a lot of them need to be part of our DNA.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I just want to echo the, the concerns about the shift in our messaging, because the extreme nature of our weather that we've just gone through is, should, while it's good that we've just gotten a bunch of rain, and that definitely is, is, is making a significant difference in our water supply outlook. That, the high variability that we are running into is exactly the, the problem that is really something that I think we, many of us, as we're sitting or nodding our heads, we understand. I don't think that our customers do. And I just want to shine a spotlight emphasis on the fact that we really need to do some great communications work around helping our customers to understand that this, that having these, this rainfall is a great thing. It's wonderful. We're, we're happy to have it. But it's the kind of thing that makes it extremely difficult to make sure that we reliably can plan around, you know, managing our water supply so that we have reliability. And it, and that's a tricky message. I don't have an answer to what, how that goes. I'm sure Adrian, you know, has, will have some great ideas about it. But, you know, I do think that this is an important time to really educate our customers, because this is not the end of our challenges around managing for the drought or climate change and the high variability that, that we're, we have seen, like, I can't, to have the driest year followed by the wettest October is exactly a, a great example of the kind of things that we're going to need to deal with in the future.
Yep.
I agree. Any other comments from Larry? I'm sorry, Larry Russell. It looks like you want to speak.
That's exactly what happened after the last drought. But they said the Chester would take like 40 years to fill up. It was filled in a year and a half. And, you know, yeah, that's an important part. I think we have to look seriously, though. And, you know, yeah, that's an important part. I think we have to look seriously, though, at the irrigation ban. Um, that would be the one you you're talking about the fines. I don't think that is is really as critical as the. Idea of of controlling how the water is used, not how much is used, but what it's used for. So that's the one I would look at hard.
I think all I would add, so I'm I'm just agreeing with all the the comments that my board colleagues have made. Um, you know, obviously, we need to keep messaging about. The the very variable situation we're in and I think it is challenging for the public. It's like, oh, now it's raining. We're all good. Um, so I I do think that um we need to work together as a board with management and staff about, you know, how to, you know, roll out that that shift in messaging to the public. I think a big part of that, too, is to really continue on with the various um. Uh, long term plans we have, you know, whether it's the inner tie or whether it's Sonoma or, you know, some other options. Um, I think it's very important that we continue to message to the public and that we continue on. Um, those paths until we decide which one it's ultimately going to be. Um, because we do have um momentum and we do know that we could very easily be right back in a severe drought. You know, in a matter of months or 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 years. And, you know, these projects take time and um I think it I think it really behooves us. To build on the momentum, you know, continue down the path for um all of the options we're contin- we're considering until. We have greater clarity about which one is really going to work um the best for us in the long term and. Um, you know, the one thing that I think the rain really gives us is a little bit of flexibility. Uh, it gives us some time to really um flesh out these options and, you know, in a little bit more detail, you know, really understand better. Um, you know, what these relationships with these other, um, you know, out of district partners can look like and how they can work. And um, so I I think that is, for me, at least, the critical thing that we need to be doing going forward is maintaining that momentum. To um be addressing those those longer term resilience options.
Those are very good points and important to keep in mind. Uh, another thing to keep in mind about the rain is it reduces demand. So, oh, it it the changes that Carrie was talking about are in part. Due to our uh efforts, but they're also in part due to the fact that people aren't silly. If it's wet outside, they don't need to irrigate. They don't want to water. So, you know, we have that other benefit that the rain gives us, which is the uh immediate demand reduction.
Yeah. Um, okay, if if there aren't any other board comments on this item, I'm going to turn to public comments. Okay, Terry?
We have two, so um a few coming. Uh, Paul Deuter, then Roger Roberts, please. Mr. Deuter.
Uh, yeah, I just have a a co- a a question and I guess an observation. Uh, the question I have is. Doesn't our uh doesn't the water that we use for irrigation, isn't that like more than fifty percent of our water usage? And if everybody has their irrigation turned off, shouldn't we see a much larger? Um, result in water conservation? Shouldn't we basically see it go to over fifty percent? That's the first question. Um, the second is an observation that goes along the lines of what um some of the directors have said. Uh, right now, we have a ban on irrigation and uh I think that, you know, speaking as just a member of the public. For me, that kind of has no consequence because I've got my irrigation system completely turned off. Um, as long as the rains are continuing, why don't we just have everybody, you know, just tell them to turn their irrigation systems off? And, you know, we have this ban right now that says you cannot do it. It seems to me that we should just take advantage of that and say, you can't do, you don't need to do it. You, let's not do it. And let's save the water while we have it, while we have the opportunity to save some water.
Yeah, I I I think we're all exactly in that same place, but um Carrie, do you, um, it seems like you might be the in the best position to ask, answer the question about um conservation?
Yeah, so prior to the drought, demands tend to double during the summer. So so winter demands compared to summer demands, it was a it would double. So, um, you know, we can assume that that was winter uses were only indoor, although. You know, some people may still have their irrigation running even when it's raining, so.
Yeah, maybe just to uh expand on that, I think, Mr. Deuter, what we're what we're saying is. You are correct that um water, um irrigation water is fifty percent of our use, but that's an annualized number. Is that a fair way to put it, Carrie? So we wouldn't necessarily expect to see the immediate um increase that you're suggesting because people are already using less water because it's the winter. Is that, Carrie, you might be able to put that a little more elegantly than I have just done it.
I think you nailed it.
Well, let's hope I didn't talk too long. Um, and then was there, what did we uh, did we answer your question there, Mr. Deuter, or or was there something else?
Um, hold on, let me get him back on. I apologize.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Deuter.
That's good. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Uh, Mr. Roger Roberts, then Baron ATA, please. Mr. Roberts.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the comments of the board are timely and spot on. And certainly I would echo those comments. Uh, the messaging on the street is that. Uh, MMWD has not planned for long range. Uh, supply uh management. And that that's the major criticism of of the board, and I think some of the. Board members who are up for reelection are going to have to address that question. So I would sincerely hope that even if we get a super. Heavy rain this winter that completely fills our reservoirs, that you do not do what you did. Uh, not this board, but MMWD did after the last major drought in seventy six, seventy seven, is take long range planning off the table. Uh, that's the new normal. I would hope that you would continue to pursue long range planning for resilience. And diversification of your water supply regardless of what the rainfall is this winter. Thank you.
Uh, I just. Oh. Uh, I think the board did a very good job of long range planning after the seventies drought. I mean, we built new reservoirs. We connected to the Russian River. Um, there's a lot of things that were done um to to. That we didn't go by, but we did change the whole nature of our water storage and uh operations. The one thing I don't think that was anticipated was the state board suing us in ninety five. Over our capturing of the water. I think that, like many of the public, they think we just have the right to do what we damn well please. And just take the water when we wish to, and the state board disagreed because of the fisheries release. So that's, to me, that's really the kinker in the long range planning was with the fact that we lost twenty five percent of our captured water. Because we had to release that water. And for folks to remember, the ninety five agreement, which is a judicial agreement. Says that um that we are not allowed to capture any more water out of Lagunitas. That means if we deepen reservoirs, raise dams, we have to release whatever water we capture. So just kind of keep that in the back of your mind. So I I really think that it it's a much more complicated question, Roger, than than you just presented.
And i if I could, I, you know, I, when I hear that, it is not um the history of this board. In addition to of this organization, in addition to what Director Russell noted. We enhanced our water recycling program, a state of the art conservation program developed. And we've continued to do planning. We we did a pilot D cell. We continue to look at um opportunities with Sonoma.
We built the reclaim water plant.
Well, we continue, we continue to plan and make efforts and we're we're faced with climate change. And we're up for the challenge and we're we're going to continue to plan and bring up projects.
Okay, we have four more speakers. Uh, Mr. Rick Adler, then Jolie, please, in that order.
Yes, thank you. Um, I would suggest that in the long run, we will need more conservation and more sources of water. Because inevitably, we will grow. Uh, people, more people will come to Marin. Because people move to where the life is good and there's money, and that's Marin. And because the state of California is going to enforce us to build more housing. And there will be wet years and there'll be dry years, and we can't let the wet years. Slow down the conservation or the search for new sources of water. And so in particularly um right now. Um, not everybody is as hardcore about saving water as the staff and the board and the people that call in. A lot of people are a lot more casual about it and they feel it's wet out. They relax if they paid any intention at all. And so I would suggest we need um new slogans for the rainy season and new signs, new stickers, new. Slogans, just a few words, you know, um, to keep people conserving. Even when it's raining out. Um, and uh, I would suggest maybe we have a contest. Um, they do a contest for uh the public to suggest these new slogans. Um, with the prize and maybe involve the schools or. Um. Yeah, water users, you know, um. A heavy water users like laundromats and stuff. Anyway, people can come up with. New short slogans to keep people conserving when it's wet everywhere they look. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Adler. Uh, Jolie, please.
Yes, thank you so much. Uh, good evening, board. Uh, my name is Jolie Diane. I'm a full time researcher and. I'm I'm interested especially in the recent supplemental water supply options document. That says that cloud seeding has public acceptance. And it even has a s- a very small budget proposed seventy four hundred dollars. Um, but in light of the climate extremes and the fact that California has been doing cloud seeding in one form or the other since nineteen fifty. It's the longest cloud seeding history in the country. Um, I've actually taken lab samples since two thousand seventeen and consistently found aluminum, barium, strontium, sulfur. And silver iodide, which is suggested is actually very toxic to aquatic life according to PubChem. And it is a um, an agent that is combustible, so in light of the fires. So I would like your feedback on the cloud seeding and I would like to express my very strong opposition. For any cloud seeding. I'm actually working on legislation across the country, which has been introduced in several states. And I would like this board to acknowledge that. Protecting our water supply is the most important thing, and I think we're all on the same page on that. And I would like to hear that we would oppose and just put toss aside any cloud seeding. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um. Comment, I think we want to take just a minute to address that because I don't believe this is one of the serious options under consideration. So Ben, is that you or a member of your team?
Um, yeah, I I think uh, that's correct. Paul could chime in as well, but what we have um no plans for cloud seeding. Full stop. And we we really have not looked at it in this drought as a significant opportunity. Paul, is there anything else?
No, that's it, Ben.
Yeah, it's it's not, it's not in our budget. I mean, that seventy four hundred dollar figure was an estimate for the cost that was in the presentation. And it's, it's, it has not been seriously considered or budgeted.
Yeah.
By by this agency.
It was for here, and it was marginally successful, as I recall. So, you know, there. Oh, the fifty or something in that order?
Yeah, not recently.
No, a long, long before any of us.
Right. So, okay, I'm just mindful of the time and I want to get to all the rest of the public comments.
Um, yes, we have three more. Uh, Baron ATA, Ben fourteen oh two. Baron?
Yes, hi. My apologies earlier. I fell off the Zoom call. Couldn't get back on quickly enough. To Mr. Director Gibson's point about the lawns and the irrigation systems being turned off. It's come to my attention that some of these very large estates that are. Empty for a majority of the year. Their irrigation systems are being handled by property managers and landscape companies and gardening firms. And nobody is turning them off in the winter. So maybe there is something that you can do in the way of communicating to those large homes where we know there are very large lawns. And their irrigation systems are running throughout the year. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Uh, fourteen oh two, please. Mr. Holmes?
Uh, James, James Holmes, Larkspur. Uh, I I appreciate the uh uh answer to my uh question. Uh, and uh, I appreciate all of the staff's efforts to obtain a a temporary ability uh to uh reduce uh water releases. Um, uh, which prevent depletion of our existing resources. But um, uh, my concern and what uh I would ask the board to consider and the staff as part of their long term planning. Is what can be done to push against the ninety five order, nineteen ninety five order that uh prevent. According to the IJ, uh, prevents us from uh building uh new reservoirs or raising dams. Because that is really the best source for our um increased supplies. Uh, and uh, I I I I think that we should do whatever we can to push back against that, to reopen it. To ask our uh representatives to supersede it uh by legislative um authority. Or whatever we can do uh in order to reestablish the ability to um expand our uh reservoir supply. As well as reducing the depletion of it by uh temporary waivers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben, do you want to address that?
Well, be aware that the first proposal was by the state was for fifty percent release. We negotiated to twenty five.
Well, I I I just want to take a minute and and respond to the broader issue, though.
So, right, I think the the speaker is referencing some discussion we've had on our ability to increase. Our reservoirs on the mountain and it, that that's certainly. Something that we've thought about, but it is a very um highly subscribed stream. Um, we have a whole number of lakes and there's not a lot of capacity within that. System, given the fisheries, to tap more of that. I mean, the the there there could be nibbles around the edges. We do have um an a reservoir that's not on the mountain that we we are. In our high level thinking down the road, that may be a candidate suleholy, but. These are big, um, very complex. All of these are complex projects. So there there there's more to come. Right now, the drought projects in front of us are the ones we've been talking about, the inner tie and expansion of our partnership with Sonoma. To capture some of these winter waters.
Uh, Mr. Clayton Smith?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Uh, yes, um, some years ago, uh, actually about six years ago, uh, when I was um. Uh, working with the Marin Coalition, I had a professor from UC Berkeley, who's probably the leading paleoclimatologist. Uh, concerning the paleoclimatology of the Western United States. Uh, come give a a lecture here and also at the Mill Valley Library. And she's written a book called The West Without Water. And I would think it would be incumbent on each and every person on the water board. And particularly the management of the water district to buy a copy of this book and to read it. It is a primary source of information as to the long term, I mean, the millennial history of rainfall. And not only in the um California and in the Bay Area, but also in the Western United States. And I think when you read this. And I think when you read this book, what you walk away with is quite simply the fact that, yes, our climate is very volatile here. The Western United States is a hugely volatile climate that goes from very wet to very dry. And that ten and twenty and thirty-year droughts are not uncommon. In fact, century-long dry spells are not out of the question in the natural history of the Western United States. And for that reason, in many ways, we can look at the problem we face as an unnatural overpopulation of the Western United States that has occurred during this extremely wet spell that we've had and enjoyed. And we have a very I would say a meager historic appreciation of our dilemma. And so I would say that I support all those efforts that have been recommended. We definitely need to begin looking at expanding our resources, digging some holes. Because we were given, I think, just recently in this year, a warning. And we should heed the warning and we should embrace some big thinking and some big projects. Thank you.
Thank you. President Kohler, Paul Dieter wants to make one more comment. Would you and the board be agreeable to that?
I guess so. I want to be sure that we don't have everybody re-comment all over again, but we'll we'll make it this this one time. It is Christmas almost.
Okay, Mr. Dieter? Mr. Dieter?
Hi, yes, I I just wanted to ask another question. So, you know, I went on a bike ride yesterday during a break in the rains and I saw that, you know, like half of the streets in San Antonio are flooded and same thing in Fairfax. And I went up on Mountain Tam and there's like a million impromptu creeks all over the place. It just seems like there's water everywhere except in our reservoirs. And I'm kind of wondering, can we do better at storm water capture?
Thank you. There are no further comments.
Okay, I'll just say to Mr. Do the the short answer on can we do better on storm work at water capture is yes, and it's a longer conversation than we can have tonight. But I I think we're all thinking hard about that, given the very the significant challenges with doing that in this particular geography. All right, we're going to move on to the next agenda item. If I can find it, which is thanks, sorry. Right, funding for permitting assistance provided in support of temporary emergency desalination.
Yes, good evening, Board. Paul Saly, Operations Director. I would just comment that Ben asked me to change that title. And for some reason, I I didn't. It really, it sounds a lot more formal than it really is. You know, funding for desalination. It's at its heart, this item really is related to our efforts to explore temporary emergency desalination, which we were pursuing all of, maybe a month ago, it feels like, no, two months ago, it feels like it was last year, you know, twelve months ago now at this point. But really, it was just in in October that we were really carrying two projects. The intertie, emergency intertie across the bay and of course, temporary emergency decel that we were investigating as a backup option to that project. And in in order to carry that project forward and keep it viable, we were proceeding under an amendment number one that was authorized by the general manager to develop a detailed schedule for temporary desalination. It so that we can, you know, really get to the finer points of what needs to happen, what would have needed to happen and when. And in the process of developing that, we we understood that permitting was going to be an absolutely critical item for that option for us. And our team, Kennedy, Jenks, and Jacobs did a really good job overall producing the technical memorandum summarizing all of our efforts. But but also, you know, conducting initial permitting investigations with a number of different agencies that would be required for temporary emergency decel. The permitting investigation that was done was, as I say, done under sort of a hurry-up offense mode and we did not have budget approved for that. And that's what this item is seeking your approval for is for for nineteen thousand five hundred dollars of funding to support the permitting work that was already carried out by our consulting team in support of temporary emergency desalination.
So, Paul, I think this is going to be confusing to a lot of people. Can you clarify? We are not proceeding. Can you clarify the status of this? Because we are not proceeding with this project at this time.
We are not. No, we've concluded our investigation in discussions with the board with greater clarity in October, mid-October timeframe on some of the other options, including winter water that we've talked about tonight and the intertie itself. At desalination, work on desalination has been paused. There's been no additional work since then. We've we've just we waited until now to bring this item. Just we have a moment of a small window on our on the board's calendar tonight and some of our calendars have been pretty long recently. So that's why this item is showing up now.
Yeah, and I also think it indicates the depth to which the option was run to ground by the board. You know, I think it's important for the public to see the investment in in the consultation or the the agreement with with Kennedy Jenks and, you know, certainly it is a complex project and, you know, I think this really kind of puts the cap on that. So you know, it's worthwhile study and, you know, I support I support the item.
Yeah, I I concur. I think it is important that we have the flexibility to explore options that we ultimately decide not to proceed with. That's just as important as proceeding with items that we do find are in the best interest of the right pair. So I agree.
Part of our due diligence. So, you know, that's what it's an indication of. So.
Right. Okay, any further board comment on this item?
I'd like to say one more thing regarding the capture of the storm water. To look at it as a package that the water that he's talking about that's running in presumably is downstream of our reservoirs. It's very difficult to capture water downstream of the dams. Not impossible, but difficult. But more importantly, is that water counts as our fish water. So it's it's a flow measurement. It's not that we have to release X amount of water. It's that we have to achieve a flow at a certain point in Loganite's Creek. So all that water adds in and counts for the fish. So it isn't that all of it's helping in in our assessment, even the water that doesn't get captured behind the dams.
Okay, I I gotta add this. There was a question about Phoenix and I know, Paul, you addressed that before. So can you give us kind of an elevator speech on whether we can pump Phoenix when it's when it's really gushing like it is now?
Yeah, I'll keep it as brief as I can. So first, Phoenix is not what we refer to as an online reservoir. We're we have to do a mini project in order to be able to pump it. When we have Phoenix as low as we had prior to the rains and it fills up the way it did. It's all rainwater and it's highly turbid and low alkalinity. Rainwater has no alkalinity in it. Those two combined make it very difficult for us to treat. And then the third complexity is that we're focused on taking as much Sonoma water as we possibly can at a time when our system demands are very low. So unfortunately, we're just not in a position to to capture the Phoenix spill at this time.
At this time, but I do want to say, Paul, right, we had, we did a number of months ago, pump Phoenix. So we do utilize it. It's just right now with everything going on. I do want to note, right, Crystal Engineering has a project that will facilitate the easier transfer of water from Phoenix into our system. And the board will be hearing about that coming up.
It should also be
I'm I'm feeling the need to get us back on track, guys. This is the item on the approving the money for decel. I'm just feeling Molly radiating as quite reasonably. We really, we really need to stick to these rules. So I'm gonna, with everybody's permission, I'm gonna bring this back to the question of approving this item with regard to finishing out this support for the temporary emergency decel project, if that's okay. If we have any other board comment on that item? Okay, do we have public comment on that item?
There are none.
Okay, then we need a roll call vote.
We need
Motion.
Motion.
Oh, I do. I need a motion first. Exactly.
I move approval.
Thank you, Larry.
Director Bregman?
Aye.
Director Gibson?
Aye.
Director Schmidt?
Aye.
Vice President Russell?
Aye.
President Kohler?
Aye. This brings us to item sixteen, another approval item. This is an amendment to the memorandum of agreement to participate in bar the Bay Area Regional Reliability Plan.
Good evening, Board of Directors. This is Cryo Water Quality Manager. I have another presentation for you on this one and I promise to keep it reasonably short. Okay, so we wanted to present a short presentation with some background on the Bay Area Regional Reliability Partnership. Giving a bit of background on the partnership, the progress so far over the last few years, and then the recommendation and look ahead for where the partnership is going. So the the bar partnerships, the Bay Area Regional Reliability Partnership was formed in two thousand fourteen, shortly after the drought. Really in response to the drought as a way to to strengthen regional water supply reliability in the Bay Area and also improve drought preparedness. And it was formed between eight agencies, including Marin Water, so Contra Costa, East Bay Mud, Alameda County Water District, and all the other agencies that are shown up here on the screen. And really, this was not only in response to the drought, but also to look ahead at future uncertainties. So considering climate change and then also regional population and job growth within the Bay Area and regulatory drivers that could occur, you know, how could water be moved and strengthened within the entire Bay Area? So the first step that the partnership took was to really set up a baseline for the partnership, which was approving guiding principles that guided the entire that have guided the process along the along the way. So as you can see, it was really to evaluate water supply projects that engage multiple of the agencies within the Bay Area that utilize existing facilities and resources and also look at new ways of interconnecting to to build more resiliency and reliability. And the the board actually adopted a the resolution with these guiding principles back in two thousand fourteen. That was Resolution eight two seven four. So a timeline, just to look back over the last few years. This 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 resolution was adopted in two thousand fourteen and then moving into two thousand fifteen. All of the agencies signed a memorandum of agreement to develop a resiliency plan that was based on those principles. And each committed fifty thousand dollars towards this plan. So we committed fifty thousand going forward. And that money was also then used to engage with U.S. Bureau of Reclamation to to go after a grant that was then used to develop a drought contingency plan. That that contingency plan was developed over the next few years, so from two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen. And I'll go through that a little bit more in the next couple of slides. And then in two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-three, looking ahead, there's a few initiatives that are underway. And and that has also been in collaboration with the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation and pursuing another grant. So just to kind of put this in context over the last six or seven years. So the drought contingency plan that I mentioned, that was finished in two thousand seventeen after receiving a grant from the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation. And this document is is public and it's also it's a it's a pretty thorough document of all of the Bay Area agencies that focuses on the vulnerabilities of each supply source. And then also, what are the the different drought response actions and mitigation measures that that could be pursued by different agencies in order to increase this regional resiliency? Identified within that drought contingency plan are fifteen mitigation measures. So they identified fifteen projects. One one main category was interties, so looking at interties between the agencies. And a few of those are identified on this map. So looking at different agencies in the Bay Area between Marin Water and East Bay Mud, that was actually one of the the interties that was identified. Another category that was identified as a mitigation measure was storage, so ways of increasing storage in the Bay Area. And that's the Los Terceros reservoir expansion. So over here, number seven, so a way of expanding storage locally that can that can build resiliency within the Bay Area. The two other categories were treatment, supply, and then also operations. So, you know, if building a regional desalination plant would provide resiliency for the Bay Area, that's something that the that Marin Water could participate in and would benefit our customers. And then also operationally, are there are there projects that we could pursue that that would benefit Marin Water as well? So you'll see that, you know, going after AMI was one of the projects that was identified as a way to to actually mitigate to mitigate drought and then also to just conserve water over time. But then also, another project that was focused on was this idea of shared water access program, which is really about finding water transfers within this regional collaborative agency group. So the two two kind of early actional efforts that have occurred since this plan was put together in two thousand seventeen, one of which you've heard a bit about with Marguerite Patel from Contra Costa is Los Terceros Expansion. So in twenty twenty ten, twenty twelve, they expanded to one hundred and sixty thousand acre feet. And now they are pursuing another one hundred and fifteen thousand acre feet to expand that storage, that reservoir up to a two seventy-five. And that's primarily for regional reliability and they are using that storage facility primarily for regional purposes. And and that one is a very, that's a very good example of of a facility that'll receive Prop one funding as long as they stay on track and so far they are. And then the other program is the Bay Area Shared Water Access Program. So it was previously called the Regional Water Market in some documents and they've shifted away from that name. And this is really a roadmap for for Bay Area water water agencies to develop a program for exchanges and transfers within each other. And back in two thousand eighteen, this group also received a four hundred thousand dollar grant from the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation to develop a strategy report. And that strategy report is currently underway. It's due to be out next year. And currently, there's about three different pilot projects that are underway to to develop that strategy report, one of which is the transfer between Contra Costa and Valley Water that Marguerite spoke about at the board retreat. So that they were they were transferring five thousand acre feet between the two agencies. That's one of the pilot projects that was done through BAR and through the Shared Water Access Program. So the key components of the amendment two that's brought brought forth tonight is really to extend extend this memorandum of agreement through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. And then also MMWD is now included as a participating partner in this Shared Water Access Program. So we have always been a part of BAR since it was initialized in two thousand fourteen, but we did not we did not step into the Shared Water Access Program when it was first developed, as we did not see any way of having any interties. So this is a way of just developing our understanding of exchanges throughout the Bay Area. So the recommendation tonight is to authorize the general managers to execute the second Second Amendment to the memorandum of agreement to participate in the Bay Area Regional Reliability Plan. And that is the conclusion. And I am happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Luthy. So just to clarify, and I I know you've said this, but just to make it very clear. Authorizing the this participation certainly does not commit us. It really keeps options. It really keeps options open, but does not require us to, for example, build a bridge pipeline or or anything else, but. It really would allow us to continue to participate as a partner in this initiative.
Exactly. There's no financial commitment and there's no commitment to pursuing projects. It's just a it's just. Engagement with the bar partners to continue to evaluate.
Right. I I think it's, you know, I'm I'm I really appreciate the presentation. I thought it was great, and I I think this is an enormously important. Thing for us to continue in regardless of where we go with our decision making. I think our resilience going forward. You know, really will be benefited positively by having more and more engagement with our 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 sister agencies. Any other board thoughts on this?
Yeah, I have one. Thank you, Lucy. That was a great presentation. I think the one fact that you didn't state, which is important. Is that, as I recall, there were nine. Of these transfers. That were proposed. And as I recall, eight of them got built. Leaving us as the only. Agency that's not intertwined.
You mean, when you say the nine things that got built, you mean the interties, Larry, not the transfers?
Interties.
Yeah.
Yeah, like East Bay Mud had a six inch inner tie going south. But that's, you know, like, that's that's like a, you know, spaghetti straw. Now they have a real inner tie going south.
Right.
I I know that a few of them are underway, so you're you're absolutely correct. And then a few of them are still in conceptual form, so. I think a few of them are still being evaluated. And being planned.
I thought that after Loma Creata, a lot longer ago than this, that they fixed that problem. At least the critical ones. You know, well predates the bar in twenty seventeen.
Director Russell, my understanding is. The Central Bay is all now intertwined, except for Marin. They are looking at enhancements and improvements to those inner ties. So that's kind of the gap.
Yeah, yeah.
Any any other board comment on this item?
I have a comment.
This is approval item.
I have a comment, brief comment, which is, I think one thing we've learned from the pandemic and our climate. Is that we are interdependent. Marin has been interdependent with Sonoma for many years. And, you know, given where we are, I I think we do need to keep our options open. With the East Bay, you know, I I favor expanding northward, but, you know. I think we do need to keep our our options open and, you know, I support I support the item.
Just the sheer information sharing alone is is incredibly important. And missing otherwise.
Having a seat at the table is important.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, it really is. And I agree with with Larry. You know, I think this is completely consistent with supporting. You know, deepening our relationship with Sonoma County. I don't I don't, I I, you know, I really agree that we can we can continue to do that while still. You know, keeping our options open, looking towards the rest of the Bay Area.
Yeah, keep in mind that when BAR, the twenty seventeen study was done. We were connected to to Sonoma. So they knew that in their planning, and they still showed the line across the bridge.
Right.
Agree with everything you guys just said.
Great. Do we have any public comment on this item, Terry?
Yes, ma'am. There are two, Mr. Rick Adler, then Clayton Smith. Mr. Adler, sir?
I'm sorry, I my head, I raised my hand too late for the D cell topic. And I forgot to unlower it. I have no comment on this topic. Like that. Thank you.
Mr. Clayton Smith, please.
Yeah, this brings up the issue of regionalism. Which has been a very controversial and hot topic. For many, many years. One of the. Principal things that makes Marin County such a special place. And I think one of the signature things about Marin County was its self-sufficiency. In water. As exemplified by Alpine Lake. Which is kind of the, I think, almost one of the spiritual centers. Of our life here in the county. And I would be very reluctant. To get involved in developing the idea of dependencies with the East Bay. I I think we should also remember that that pipeline can flow both ways. And I think going back to what Larry has said or Bragman said. I think if we're going to be looking for any ties outside of the county. I think we should be looking north. I think that politically and I think energetically. Looking to the East Bay is a bad idea and can lead to a lot of corruption. And I would hope that we would be able to do better than that. I think the county has been resisting this for for as long as I've been here, over fifty years. And I would hope we would continue to resist it and retain our autonomy. Thank you.
Thank you. And Roger Roberts, I have a couple coming on, Roger Roberts, then John Leschinsky, I think. Mr. Roberts.
It's important that. The Water District. Be familiar with all the options that might be available on the table. And if regionalism is one of the options. You need to know what's going on, and so you should participate in bar. And continue to do so if for no other reason. To know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. And then John Leschinsky, please.
Thank you for recognizing me. I'm a first time listener to the board. And I've been on the flood zone four board. And when we built the new pump station. I say that only because. I I get a distinct feeling that we're. Sort of on the Titanic and everybody struggling around the chairs here. And missing the big point. I strongly believe. That we should be focusing far more of our efforts here in Marin County. And I specifically say Marin County. To do some more and deeper and broader plans for desalination. I just don't believe that all this interdependent stuff. While. Perhaps useful in some way. Shouldn't take our focus away from. Making water, potable water. For our population of what, two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand people? I think that should be our focus. Because. We're asking to borrow water or buy water from areas of California that they are themselves in a drought condition. I think that the board should focus far more, from what I just heard first time. Should focus far more on the desalination efforts. To at least sustain the population of Marin County with drinking water. On a reliable basis. There's plenty of, you know, there's plenty of technology out there. I happen to be a chemical engineer myself. And there's plenty of technology out there to 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 develop a strong program. To start small and then build over the next few years. More and more capacity for desalination. We have the opportunity now to start. It's not going to happen overnight. But I come from the focus of, wait a minute, we've got to take care of ourselves here. That's it.
Thank you, sir. President Kohler and members of the board, Mr. Clayton Smith would like to make one more comment. Mr. Smith, please.
Yeah, one thing I wanted to also interject. Is that, and this goes back to the spiritual nature of Alpine Lake and the water from the mountain. This is, this is something that is very special. For so many of us, particularly a lot of us old timers who came here back in the sixties. And the idea when we turn on our faucet. The water that we're drinking. Is water that comes from that mountain. And that is something that is a deep and very spiritual connection that we all have here. It's almost a sacrament. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. There are no further speakers.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion on the item.
Move approval.
Second.
Director Bragman.
I. I.
Director Gibson.
Hi.
Director Schmidt.
Hi.
Vice President Russell.
Hi.
President Kohler.
Hi. That brings us to item seventeen, the creation of water treatment plant supervisor positions.
Thank you, President Kohler, members of the board. Our Assistant Superintendent of Water Treatment is retiring at the end of March. And and this provides us an opportunity to sort of realign the supervision of the water treatment group. And what we're proposing is to create two water treatment plant supervisors. And we're doing this by reclassifying the Assistant Superintendent position that's retiring in March. And then reclassifying a treatment plant operator position. This can be done at no cost. The district. Will be using the the sort of salary of the Assistant Superintendent to help cover the increase needed in the water treatment plant operator salary. And it does provide us some measurable benefits as well as benefits for the employees. The benefits for the district, of course, are related to. We have a longer period of supervision available onsite at the treatment plants. Currently, we have five days of supervision at the treatment plants. This change would allow us to have onsite supervision seven days a week. The other aspect of benefits to the district is in terms of succession planning. This will provide our water treatment plant staff with the necessary leadership experience to advance to the superintendent level. So when we have a retirement at a key position like a superintendent. Will have ready-made supervisors who have both experience supervising staff and running treatment plants. Who can step into that position. So we're we're asking the board's authorization to create these two supervisor positions. At no cost to the district and no increase of full-time of FTEs. I'll take any questions at this time.
Thanks, Paul. Do we have any board comments on this item, which seems like an eminently sensible idea? Okay, seeing none, do we have any public comment on this item, Terry?
None.
All right, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll move approval.
Thank you.
Director Bragman.
I.
Director Gibson.
Hi.
Director Schmidt.
Hi.
Vice President Russell.
Hi.
And President Kohler.
Hi. This brings us incredibly to item eighteen, future meeting schedule and agenda items.
Good evening. So this week we'll have our watershed committee meeting as well as our operations committee meeting. Then we won't have any more. However, I am trying to schedule with all of you a closed session. And so far, we've narrowed it down to next Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. And then earlier or later, after I sent out that email. I'm narrowing it down even to just one day, which is Monday after five P M. So if we can all agree for a closed session on Monday, December twentieth. Five o'clock or five thirty, I. If I can hear an A and an I or a motion by someone, that'd be great.
I don't think we need an emotion, but it it does work for me. Does it work for everybody else?
Works for me.
Does.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. I'll schedule.
Too much after five, by the way.
Okay, how about five thirty or five fifteen? I'll do it. Perfect. Okay, so after that, then that will be the last meeting of two thousand twenty one, and then we'll have our next regular board meeting on. On January fourth, and that is when we'll go over our schedule for two thousand twenty two.
Great. Okay, unless we have any further business, Ben. We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody. I would say happy holidays, but we're going to see each other several more times, so take care, everybody.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Good night. Thanks a lot.